Hi, welcome. Welcome to the city council work session for Monday, July 17th, 2023. For the recorder, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Nishioke.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Here.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Boyd.
Here.
Councilwoman Nordike.
Here.
Councilwoman Barney. Mayor Hoy. Assistant. Councilwoman Stapleton.
I'm here, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Nishioke, will you lead the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilor Phillips, do you have a motion for me on the agenda?
I move tonight's agenda. I don't believe there's any additions or deletions.
I second that. Great, thank you. Any discussion? Recorder, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Assistant. Councilwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nordike.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barney. Mayor Hoy. Assistant. Councilwoman Stapleton.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, tonight we have our policy agenda quarterly update and leading us off is Courtney Knutson.
I'm gonna think things, but Courtney, Courtney's gonna carry the show, I'm just the warm up.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, this is one of my favorite parts of the work that we do is this update. I think this is a great opportunity for us to check in with council and bring you up to speed on some of the most important things that we're working on. Council has four adopted priorities and we're going to be talking about each one of those this evening with a specific focus on community engagement and the work that we're doing in that arena. We do have guests here this evening from our friends at Territory who are going to be talking to us about a communication strategy that they have worked on with many in this room, practically everybody in this room in fact. So, we're looking forward to that. Courtney is going to lead us in this conversation this evening and hopefully it will be a conversation lots of opportunity for back and forth questions. So, as we move forward, please feel free to raise your hand or otherwise signal a stop and that is perfectly okay. Courtney.
I wanted to just say one thing, Councilwoman Nordike, I can't see you anymore, so if you do have a question, please feel free to just speak up, okay?
Thank you very much, understood.
Thank you, all right, Courtney, go ahead.
So, as a reminder, you all have four key priorities for the council and for our community and the direction has been provided to staff. We did that, I think it was February, we had our work session where we resolved to commit to these priorities and we have an update for you today on how we're doing at this point in the fiscal year, brand new, but in this calendar year, six months in, seven months in, how we're doing. Those four priorities, just for everyone to get oriented again, they're responding to our sheltering crisis, planning for our future and engaging our community, which is the large portion of the upgrade tonight, and then sustaining infrastructure concerns. David, you set that, sorry. So, here we are in the first six months and you all have a more detailed written narrative report in your packets for today, but here's where some of the first highlights that we've been able to accomplish together. You remember that we opened your cleanup hall, that's 52 units of affordable housing and Nicole, I believe you gave an update last time, we had the Salem Housing Authority commissioned that it's entirely leased, or at least that it will be, which is great news and a huge milestone for so many reasons to be at that point at this time of the year. The navigation center also opened, that's 75 beds of low barrier of shelter, you will know all the details there because many of you were there when we opened it, that's great, very exciting. You also, just last week, I think you left an air service announcement and many of you went to the third micro shelter that opened, which is the young adult micro shelter, 18 and 20, the Warrior Girls. You can also see that the neighborhood traffic management plan was adopted this year already as well, so that's quite a lot of progress on some of your initiatives. Again, as we've mentioned, tonight, we're going to be hearing from Greg Netsker and Madeline Carroll shortly about the details about all of the great work that they've been able to accomplish too and we'll talk more about that in a minute. So, on the responding to our sheltering crisis, the font gets pretty small because there's a lot of progress, so apologies, but there are a lot more details in your report. I just want to highlight that the bold are really the specific things that you've asked us to try to accomplish, and that's like to these four big areas. The bullets are my attempt to really short, I think it was an 11-page report in her packet, so sometimes the detail that you might want, might be missing, but just a quick overview, also, you notice that there are quite a few staff in this room that are smarter about all of these things than I, so if you have questions, we have backup. You can call a friend and we can get the answer that you want right here tonight. So, just on the community cleanup, we set up in 2021, we set up a weekly update that we send out via email, it's a newsletter weekly that tells people what we're doing and where we're going next and how we're managing that work. We also put together the, with the state sheltering grant, we were able to put together the Salem Outreach and Lovable Services team, that SOS team you hear often about. And we began working in '22 with that group, really taking care of some of the primary public health concerns that people were phoning in with concerns about on the streets and so we've been able to prepare those sites pretty effectively. And then you also note that the code, everything changed as a result of House Bill 3115 and you've all just spent some time helping us be more responsive to those rule changes as it relates to folks living in public spaces, camping in public spaces, yes?
Courtney, throughout the time that I've been a city councilor, we've had an interesting increase in RVs in our community and I know that we've done some work with that, but I know that there was also a lot of bottlenecks throughout the system on how, not necessarily in the city, but with how you process and deal with RVs that are left or abandoned. I know that that was also something that was in the state legislature this session, could you give us a brief update on where we're at on that and how big is the problem in our community now? Have we really managed to get kind of a leg up on that or where are we at?
It's a great question, I can do the legislative update, but I can't do all of the, what we're seeing on the street and how that's changing. I don't know if, I saw Kristin Rutherford was on the call too, she may be ready to do that, but at the legislature, we were trying to follow the towing association, which had put together a piece of legislation that was trying to capture some of that cost at the point of sale so that you would have a mechanism to take care of the cleanup, which is costly and DEQ is involved because there's a lot of concerns about the hazards that might be present in those vehicles. So, there was an attempt, it didn't get everywhere, a lot of other things happened, but I'm sure it'll be back in a future session.
Okay.
Sorry?
Speak to the mic because people can't get it.
Really?
Because it's from people that are attending virtually.
Hey David, are you wanting to make it up without my help?
Anything to do?
Mike? Thank you, David. Does anybody, I can't see, Kristin, do you want to jump in on the status of RVs?
There we go. Yes, so the challenge with RVs is it's finding locations and I know that Gretchen and her team and our nonprofits have done a significant amount of outreach over the last few years and finding enough places to house, you know, more than, you know, a handful has just continued to be an ongoing challenge. So, barring, you know, acquiring an RV park or developing our own location for this, we're not going to make a dent in this with RVs.
Thank you for the update.
Let's put that back in.
That should help too.
Do we want to get a test?
I think it's probably better because it's going to drive you crazy.
Okay.
That's how you can know.
There's a mic in the corner here too.
Yeah, that's better, let's see.
How are you feeling in Zoom land about the sound now?
Sound is fine to me.
Excellent, thank you, Councilwoman Nordike.
No problem, proceed.
Thank you. So, I think we've talked about those points and then we wanted to also address the opening of the NAV Center, which we talked about a minute ago, the Safe Salem Funds, that work after the state grant runs out, if it moves forward. Any questions on the navigation center?
Do we know how many people are there now?
I don't know this moment, but I know that they've been slowly adding people into the facility. We can get an update. Anybody else know more? I don't know the exact number, they are slow rolling out, it is that quantity level in that facility. You're better off taking in about five to ten at a time and slowly bringing them in and transitioning them into the location. So, the last I heard, they were up to nearly 20, I can find out if I can get a hold of somebody else. Thank you for the question, thanks.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just on the topic of the navigation center. I wasn't able to make the opening, I was there, I think in the winter of the month before it was open and it was, looks fantastic. Is it possible for us, you know, on city council or like neighborhood board members that are interested to tour this facility? And what would that look like? I know for the managed micro shelter sites, Church at the Park, I believe they still do tours on Thursdays. And I think it's just, you know, we can talk only so much, but people have to see it themselves to understand what we're bringing to the community and what we're actually getting for, you know, the price we're paying.
We can certainly look into that, I know we had quite a huge turnout for the event and it would be good to bring people back to show them the progress in the space, so we'll check into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the navigation center? Okay, so the micro shelter village community, as we mentioned earlier, we've added the third and so those are, there are three in Salem. The funding for those also runs out when the state grant expires and we expect that to be June 30th of 24. Does anybody have anything they want to share about the opening event? Any of you were able to go?
It was wonderful.
Yeah.
It was hot, we were all in the sun, well, a lot of us were in the sun, but a really great turnout, I really appreciated our Polk County Commissioner Wobbs's name, Gordon.
Jeremy Gordon.
Jeremy Gordon, yeah, he was there and Mayor Hoy, they both said really wonderful things about the work that it's taken to get this to the point that it's in and I know they're waiting on paving, is that it?
Paving.
Paving. And then it'll be up and going and I can't wait to see that fully functioning, it was wonderful.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, for those who weren't out there, I was surprised to learn that these buildings are on wheels because it's a flood plain and they have to be able to leave if they need to, I thought that was interesting, I had no idea.
I didn't get to go myself, so thank you. Then on the sobering center, we're still looking for partnerships and to be able to advance that priority. Bridgeway is exploring that, there's a better summary in your packet. They're looking at doing managed detoxification and adding some sobering beds to their planned facility, so that would be good news.
Do you know if Marion County is doing any work or Polk County on this, on this front?
I do not. We can fight out.
That'd be really good.
And who would we speak to to find out how Bridgeway's doing on this?
The update that I received last was from Tim Murphy himself, so he probably is the best.
Okay.
We can get an update for you and provide you an update in future packets.
Great, thank you. Is the support that the city of Salem is trying to offer to get a sobering center started, is that, you know, a dollar lease a year kind of situation where we're looking at donating land or a building space? Or do you know anything about what we are offering at the table?
I don't know that we've been asked yet. In earlier iterations, we had been a partner in funding for that kind of an activity, but it was a different collection of partners, so I'm not sure if there's any.
Okay.
I think they may, by attaching it the way they are, it might be something that they can do without a great deal of help. But we can certainly ask for anything.
Can I ask one more question? This might be you thinking. Does this typically land on cities, are there other cities that have sobering centers that they run and operate, or is this more a public health thing?
There are other cities that are in this business and I'm sure there are counties that are in business as well, so I suspect it's where you are, the resources are that are available, what the interests and need. I would be very concerned from the city's perspective as far as our ability to support anything additional. It would absolutely have to be, at this point, funded by the state or the county, certainly not by the city, given our likely funding scenario here, if we don't receive additional funds.
Would it, would it, would we be in the position to do some kind of land lease or some kind of building lease that would be affordable for something? I mean, can we partner in that way, is that something that even without additional funding, if we don't receive it?
It's possible, I'm not sure what space that would be or what land that would be. I think Bridgeway is an existing treatment facility and they're looking at adding beds for that facility. With the changes to Medicare and Medicaid billing, they may have some opportunities there that weren't there in the past.
Great, thank you. Oh, yes.
Just to reiterate, like I'm very much in support of our community adding to their resources, especially something like a sobering center. My understanding is that, you know, at one point in time, you know, Arch's Day Center had like a few beds that were reserved for this, but the operation funding that would be year over year to pay the people through the work never came through, you know, the coalition didn't happen. So, we still need all levels of government and, you know, donors to step up and meet this need. My hope is maybe with funding through Measure 110 or other sources from the state and counties, that we could get something. But I still think we should advocate for it, based on my experience in our community.
And I'd be interested to hear from county commissioners with setting up their mobile crisis response, is this part of that conversation? And how does that fit into their response as well? Would be interesting to learn.
I have previously described it as a three-legged stool, I think we have to have the navigation center, a mobile crisis response center, and a sobering center.
Places for them to go. Any other comments on this?
Councilwoman Stapleton.
Yes, please.
Thank you, I was trying to find a time to speak up without interrupting folks. I just want to piggyback on what Councilwoman Phillips said. The discussion of a sobering center predates my start time on council and I think the start time of everyone else in the room, for that matter, who's on council tonight. And I believe as Councilwoman Phillips described it, that's how I remember it as well, that in order for a sobering center to really work, you need kind of a perfect storm of a variety of agencies showing up, stepping up and providing support. That would include Salem Health, that would include the counties and so on. And of course, a sobering center does give someone a safe place to be for a night, but I'm ever mindful of the difference between managing, managing folks who are struggling with substance abuse and actually treating it. Notice how I didn't say managing homelessness versus any homelessness, there is consistently a lot of assumptions made that people who are without housing are also drug addicts and all such that they're almost one same, all drug addicts and criminals are homeless and all homeless are criminals and drug addicts. We know that's not the case. So, I was trying to remind folks that the sobering center can accomplish some goals, but let's remember the vast majority of our homeless population, according to data from the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, do not abuse drugs or alcohol. So, I want to just remind council that this is on our nice to have list, but the overlap with actually reducing the number of persons without homes on the street is a minimal overlap at best. My priority, if I had to choose anything on the list displayed on screen, would be the NAV Center because we know from speaking with our community action agency partners, they follow evidence-based practices for ending homelessness and they estimated, at the time I spoke to them, that this could have an 85% or so effectiveness rate. And what I mean by that is they get people into the NAV Center, they help folks stabilize, they align them with the services that are specific to their treatment plan and then they find a way for them to find permanent housing outside of the NAV Center. That's why it's called navigation, to help them navigate the resources they need to become self-sufficient. Or if they cannot become self-sufficient due to severe mental illness or severe disabilities, then aligning them with the appropriate resources in that way as well. So, those are my thoughts, I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you so much for sharing and really driving home that point again, I think it's really important, we can't talk about that enough, that just because folks are experiencing homelessness does not mean that they are struggling with either drug or alcohol issues. Chief, I'm wondering, you know, we have a lot of folks who drive drunk and a lot of those issues, I would say are on the rise in our town. Would a sobering center be a place where you would take people or they would just go to jail?
Talking about a real sobering center for treatment, then that's not something like just a short-term sobering, it's actual patient treatment for sobering.
If you stop somebody driving more intoxicated, they're not going to the sobering center, they're going to jail.
I hope so. So, part of what you're describing is that continuum and you also described that continuum a little bit in your goals for us. Also, in the area of responding to our sheltering crisis, we have transitioning more households into supportive housing, building more permanent supportive housing and being involved at a regional level and all of those things are still ongoing and there are more detailed updates for you and you've also, most of this stuff, I think you've heard often from us because you've had updates from Salem Housing Authority about changing and shifting the focus of the homeless rental assistance program and really getting into that basic need, that triage and moving, helping people make better connections to resources and referrals in collaboration with the folks at the Salem Police's team, the HST, and I'm Not Home Service team and the Salem Outreach and Lovable Services team and also the housing navigators in Salem Housing Authority and all of our other partners who are involved in this work together. So, you can see that we're shifting, we've talked about your cleanup hall, S.H.A.'s Sequoia Crossing property is set to open probably in January, I heard, it was looking good. So, hang on, we'll get there, that's another 16 new units. And then we also participate, as you know, the mayor's on the executive committee for the regional Mid Willamette Valley Home Services. Any questions about any of those updates? Yes, I don't know if you want to wrap back around, but Ashley Humphries has reported that 24 at the navigation center currently, 22 are enrolled for the emergency order housing program and will be immediately able to graduate into homes, so that team will continue to cycle through and they are doing up the vital league. Great.
Could you repeat that?
There's presently 24 at the navigation center today. 22 of those 24 are immediately enrolled into the emergency order housing program, which is the state of emergency declaration. So, they will be immediately able to graduate into a home from the navigation center. So, I'm sorry, is that 46 or is that 22 of the 24? 22 of the 24, great. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into a different area called planning for our future. We talked earlier about the neighborhood traffic management plan having been approved and I think you spent quite a lot of time with that and I don't know if we need to do any more today, but the neighborhood traffic management plan is approved, that's designed to slow vehicle speeds on neighborhood streets. We are launching the riparian inventory for natural resources, this is a follow-on to our Salem, it's one of those things that we're doing to just shore up all of our planning work for the future. We're expecting outreach to begin in the fall, by the way, they're doing data stuff now. Advancing the housing production strategy, that's going to launch in the winter of '23 and to get ready, we've done some permitting efficiency study work, we've gotten really into all the processes and trying to make sure that we're, we can move as quickly as we need to meet the housing needs in the community, sorry, that's coming out, you should expect to see it probably in August.
Thanks. I had a question on this and maybe this is for Kristin Rutherford. It said in the report that we are hiring somebody to do the housing production strategy, would you mind, I'm sorry Courtney, could you, could you produce this so I could see her? Thank you so much. We are bringing somebody on to do this work, can you tell me more about that and maybe why we wouldn't be using existing staff to do this work?
So, the actual housing production strategy, we've applied for a grant through DLCD and they would then do this work. We would not have existing staff do it because we don't have enough capacity. So, the position that you're talking about is within the urban development department and it's a vacant program manager position that we are repurposing to be housing-focused and to sort of be that conduit and bringing together of all the different parts of the city that touch on housing and that would help coordinate, coordinate resources because they would manage all of our different housing incentive programs outside of the housing authority one, but we have several within the urban development department that are managed by different program managers. So, to gain some efficiencies, we would be consolidating all of those under one program manager who would then be the primary point of contact.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Any other questions on this point?
Yes, I have questions, counselor.
Great, go ahead.
Thank you, can you tell me about this grant position? Did I hear you say we've submitted the grant application, can you tell me just the 10,000-foot view? How much did we ask for and how long does a grant run for, is it a one-year grant, two-year, three-year, just curious? I, you know, I don't have those details. My understanding through the long-range planning staff is that it's not so much a dollar amount, it's that this would be then a project that DLCD staff would take on and that they would be performing that work. So, I don't know a dollar amount associated, but it's not, it's not a grant where we went and asked for a certain amount of money to then go hire a consultant to do that work. It's a different kind of arrangement. Okay, well, I'm, I think it's a lovely idea, we know that there's so many different potential funding streams for different types of housing. Every time I sit down with Nicole Utes, I learn just another tip of the icebergs of what Salem Housing Authority works with all the time. The system is Byzantine at best and so I'm excited at the prospect of the efficiencies of merging various aspects into one, you know, into one position and working with this contractor to do so because I see a real need. So, it's two different things, so it's the grant through DLCD where they would do the work to develop the housing production strategy because this is one of their requirements. So, they will help us in implementing this potentially. Then the second piece is a position that we already have within urban development that's currently vacant, that rather than using that position
That rather than using that position the same way we have in the past, we're going to repurpose it to then be the single point of contact for housing issues.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right, go ahead, Courtney.
Okay. Uh, the last one on here is the biggest one, and I did that intentionally because um it doesn't fit on the slide. So the last one is about the transportation system plan update. That's the language that we used when we were visiting in January. And since then, we've gotten pretty um smart and I think pretty cool about it. Um, this is called Salem in Motion, and this is how it all comes together. This is looking at how all of our work around connecting people and places, what was transportation system plan update, relates to the neighborhood traffic management plan, relates to land use. You can see how it influences climate action and vice versa. You can also see how the comprehensive parks system plan is coming and how the riparian inventory all comes together. And the words here in white um are really what we're trying to achieve through the work. So you read it out from the center. Our Salem is at the center of everything, as we've talked. And as you know, after three years, getting all that great input from the community, you can see how it's influencing and rolling into all of these upcoming plans. And you can see that equity is influencing all of that conversation. There's a really cool flyer. This came out of a Neighborhood Association chairs question. Someone asked, hey, how does this all come together? And we sat down and put this ticket together. It's the centerpiece of an explanation on the front. Beautiful. And each of these plans has a little blurb and an update on time and when you can expect to see all this work. So so there's a lot going on is what this is designed to show was. Any questions about all of that? There's more detail in your staff, staff report too, if you have other questions. And you're going to be, this is, we're working on this for the next couple of years together. So you'll see this often. And then um also in planning for our future, we have a little bit of an update on the climate action plan and the solid waste policy. So on the climate action plan, you're aware of the microgrid that's at the new public workshops complex. That's really exciting. You also are aware that we recently applied for grants for electric vehicle charging and the pre-canopy improvement. I don't, pretty significant improvement, um but a lot of great work is going on there. There's also uh another two hundred thousand-ish, I think it might be a little less in the budget for this year to help uh continue to implement some of the climate action plan strategies. Um, and so we're, we're getting a lot of work done there. Uh, the University of Oregon partnership around sustainable cities here gives us another couple of opportunities. Um, we're, right now, we are talking about advancing resiliency hubs with a community-engaged architecture course. Um, that would be really cool. I think right now we're planning fall with, you know, teachers are taking a break, professors are taking a break. So we don't have that uh term nailed just yet, but that's what we're planning. And then we were talking with another architecture professor about passive cooling. And when we think about the civic center building and the opportunities that that we might have there, as we go through some of the seismic retrofitting, we might have some opportunities to get rid of all those microclimates that we live in inside the building and um do better things so that the building functions a lot better. Uh, are there any questions about that work? Many of you participate in the climate, in climate action plan committee as well. Um, then on solid waste policy, that committee was formed, uh G twelve. And um I think that's Counselor Stapleton, Counselor Barney, Counselor Gwen, Counselor Nishioke, with Counselor Hoy as an alternate. So that's really exciting to get um into the depths of solid waste policy and pricing and all of those fun, fun conversations. Any questions about that?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
Great. Um, so engaging in our community. Um, we have two slides on this, but we're going to take a pause and invite Madeline and Greg up to talk a little bit more. But you also, um, in June earlier last month, I guess, we, we opened the customer service center, which is a one-stop place for people to do business with the city. Met, I think I saw several of you there as we were opening that. Um, very exciting. We're seeing a lot of business down there and it's really great for uh eliminating some of those lost souls in the atrium. And we're looking for, for things to do, uh, keep people in contact. It also means we have a phone number that people can call. We didn't used to have that either. So this is again, one place for people to get a lot of those questions answered. And we're opening an auxiliary customer service center in the shops complex as well, sure people might live over there, can go there instead. Same service. Um, are there any questions about that before we?
Yes. So um I did help somebody wandering around the other day.
Oh, no.
And I was trying to direct him to the uh customer service center, but it turns out he had to first go to the court. So um I don't know if when people get their notifications from the court that maybe there needs to be an explanation, come here first and then you'll go to the service center. It's just a comment.
Yes, thank you. Um, so next, I think we're going to just sort of pause the update and hear from Greg Netsker and Madeline Carroll. Um, what we're going to be talking about is a strategic engagement and communications plan that we started in two thousand twenty-two. Irrigable. Um, and uh they have a whole bunch of slides that we can talk through, but um the work, I think, is, is really good and I hope you enjoy hearing about it and I hope you get a chance to ask your questions. You guys are going to do everything.
Here?
Yep, there we go.
Scroll with this.
I think the other one works, but I couldn't command it.
Okay. Um, um, sorry, I'm back. Um, thank you for having us. Uh, we'll try to make this uh as substantive and as brief as possible, uh so you can carry on with the meeting. Um, um, as, as Keith said earlier, we talked to most of the people in this room uh during, during the project. Um, and actually, this is the first time we've been talking on the campus, they did it a little months ago. Um, so uh I believe you already have a copy of this, but we're going to be walking through the high-level pieces. Um, and I, I hope you did recognize that a lot of what you really specified in those interviews with us led to how we thought about this project. Um, the number of concerns you raised, we tried to address around it. So with that, and that one's going to start walking through the first part of this and I'm going to come along in a second.
This is the report in uh, can you, if you have it already in attendance?
Yes, we do.
There's a lot more detail in here. It's a really high-level overview, so uh do feel free to dive in more closely to anything that's more, to know more about. Yeah, great. So we just wanted to first reiterate uh this city council's bold expectations, specifically in the twenty seventeen local policy agenda. Uh, the second priority listed is, as we have argued, that improving engagement and communications. Um, the detail under that is a comprehensive engagement plan. And that is what we are going to be talking to you about today. Um, some of the elements under that that you'll see again as we move forward, um our strategy to tell our story, increase awareness of the impact of the city, um and what that has, uh, the impact that it has on people's daily lives. And increase the participation and diverse participation, enhance our volunteer base, expand neighborhood association, advisory board and commission. And benefit talent acquisition and recruitment strategy. So this should probably really be used since it's your priority. So uh, hold on. Uh, so these are the primary strategic objectives of this plan, what it was designed to support. Increase the public's trust of city government and its awareness of city sources and activities. Increase consistency and quality of non-English communication, particularly in Spanish. Better represent the city's point of view uh and its brand in all communications. Create a more effective coordinated communications organization and create greater public engagement in collective decision. And these objectives came out of our conversations with new city council members, uh as well as uh city employees, specifically employees that work in communications roles, as well as uh a wider group, a focus group of other city employees, as well as groups of various different community members. So these are very high-level view of the recommended strategies and sort of our buckets that those fall under. Uh, under resources, we're recommending that there is dedicated funding provided to a communications leadership position as well as a centralized team um and tools and resources. There's a lot more detail about that again in the reports. Um, under people, specifically install a chief communications officer and a centralized communications queen. For structure, to implement a hub and spoke model. This one we highlighted uh in the next slide, so we'll talk in a little more depth about that in a minute. Under tools and channels, uh to centralize tools and support communication, uh so that those tools that already exist are more shared and so it's clear what people uh, the communication needs in order to be successful. Continue to improve the website. Uh, there were the recent website updates that were there. Uh, there, we've heard from internal staff as well as the community that there are still things that can be improved. Uh, under messaging, promote existing channel services and resources. One of the common things that we heard over and over is a lot of things that people are asking for already exist, both internally and externally. And really is an awareness issue to make it so that people know where those things are and how to find. Shape and tell the city's story. This one we heard from a lot of you on City Council, that being able to tell the story of the city, the city government, Salem as a city uh effectively and in an engaging way, uh and in a way that lots of people can have access to and really. Under process, implement a new type of city storytelling. This connects to that last one, shape and tell city's story. And we uh also have a slide to highlight a little bit more detail about that in a moment. Adopt a communications first and Spanish first orientation. And then under best practices, create a communications and engagement best practice handbook. So this plan is a high-level plan and doesn't get into a lot of the detail that we know folks want answered about how exactly things are going to work, um how the structure would work and who would communicate to who. You know, all of uh the coordination that would need to happen to make the plans successful. Uh, so we're really recommending that a next step would be working with uh internal folks to create a detailed handbooks that everyone understands exactly what they need to do and how they can do it. Uh, and that would also require investing in staff training to make sure everyone's clear on the decisions that have been made around that. And finally, leadership needs to provide clarity. So that's really a supportive of the plan from leadership. Uh, and making sure that it's clear that leadership uh has been a part of the decision-making process and understand what it is that the plan is asking you to do. Madeline, I'm sorry, would you mind getting a little bit closer to the microphone, we're just having some?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to. Any questions so far?
Any questions?
Like you're good to go.
Right on the corner. Corner of the table, straight in.
Oh.
Where the water is. Right here?
Should I stand there instead with everything? Okay. Are there any questions so far? So I'll talk through this one and then I'll hand you off to Greg so that you don't have to listen to me talk too much all in one in one go. Um, so just to clarify the hub and spoke concept. Uh, at a really high level, that means that in the center, there's a communications leader and a centralized team. That team can include uh roles, design, support team, uh folks that can help coordinate internal communications, external communications, public engagement. Um, things like that that would be supportive of folks that could remain embedded in departments but have better through lines of communication up to that centralized team and more support and coordination from that centralized team.
Should I also move over here or is it a thing I stay here? I'm happy to move over. I'm, I'm happy to move over. I'm, I can also talk louder, so it's easier. Um, this last piece, I want to talk about for just a second because this came out very specifically out of the conversations we have with you uh in the council, with our, with the council. Um, so many of you talked about the need to be able to get across the city's stories, the important part of the city's stories, and specifically how they actually impact the people in the community. And um when we looked at this, um it, it to, uh, you know, in our assessment, the city has for many years, like most other cities used to do, has uh used a more of a, a public relations first strategy. For many, many years when we had lots of, of news organizations, that was what you did. You gave them information and they published that information. But as those go away and we need to find ways to connect more directly to the community, we have to sort of adjust how we actually make that connection. So what we're recommending is that there's really an actual shift in how the city starts to tell the story, how they think about the information that they give out. Rather than just specifically my, for example, giving out a set of, of facts. Perhaps actually giving out a, a, a specific idea of what this actually means on a day-to-day basis for a community. What, what the impact of a tax levy might be, what you might see in the community because of that. And that is something that allowed you as a city to shape the story of your successes in a way that we heard many of you say, don't be able to do now. So this is probably the most significant shift uh we will discuss in this entire plan. Um, and we're happy to talk about this more if you'd like.
I would love to dive into this a little bit. Um, this was something that was really important to me when we spoke. Um, when you talk about hiring somebody new to kind of lead this new organization, is this type of storytelling, does that come with a, a set of training or schooling that a person brings into an organization? Or is it a cultural shift within an organization or, or kind of both?
It's, that's a really good question. In my opinion, it's a little bit of both. I mean, I think that you'll have somebody, when, when you bring somebody in, for example, as a sort of chief communications officer or whatever you call that person. Uh, I think we'll, we would recommend that you would look for somebody that has some some bent toward that kind of, of impact-related communications to begin with. Now, as far as the training piece goes, that is sort of a cultural shift. That is, that is a bit of rethinking how we even think about the stuff we put on paper. Um, and I, and I also want to be clear to say that it's not like we're saying that nobody within the city does that. It's not what we're saying. We're just trying to find a way to more consistently get that impact story across. So we also felt like training would be, and this comes up as one of our recommendations, training, uh staff training. Um, because there, there are so many people here at the city who have deep knowledge and long tenure. And we're not necessarily saying, don't use them. We're saying, no, they're here. They know. Let's get them some training to how they might think about this differently and, and help this cultural shift.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah. Um, we also have a, a slide uh here. We have a number of these different um uh recommendations and there are a number and we realize that they represent a shift. Um, but we looked at them and tried to think about if we were to recommend kind of a timeline approach of these, what you might want to do kind of in the short, medium and long term. Um, and obviously there, I'm not going to read through them all. They're all here on the slide and they're also in the book. Um, but we did feel that some of these upfront are like a next six months kind of thing, like if this is going to happen, these are the things that we feel would be the most important to start to really present this on first. Um, we also recognize that um although we tried to really, as we were putting this together, we, we tried to not approach this from a, um, the world is a roaster, we can do whatever we want here kind of point of view. We tried to look at it from a, um, if we can think about if we can think about the resources we have and perhaps shift them and hopefully be able to find some more to help the city, how might we think about this timeline? And how might we even think about the recommendation? So that's sort of how we view that. So that's why these things in the beginning really feel like that they're most important to us to kind of move this forward. And I know there's a lot of writing up here, but we assumed that there would be some questions around this. So I'd be happy to, either of us, be happy to talk about this for a moment if you'd like.
I do want to acknowledge too that while we didn't have a "the world is our oyster" approach, we also recognize that this is still an idealized timeline. We know that things move slowly and sometimes those things are out of their control, especially in government situations. So this is ideal, and we know that six months might actually mean a year, you know. But we tried to break it up to short, medium, and long in order to show sort of how one phase can move into the next.
I can kick us off. Resources are limited. So when we are looking at the short term, are, do you have those listed in most important to least important?
Oh, no.
Or, okay, so any of these one things in here that if we were going to dedicate all of our resources to, what would be the thing that we would do in the first six months?
Oh, you're saying if we had to pick one, us, what would we do?
I would have a centralized communication leadership position.
I would too.
You too. I'll third that motion.
So I guess just to clarify, does that fall under the structure category? Or is that the people?
That would be the people. Okay.
But it affects the structure. So it would need that centralized person in order to help to plan and form the structure that would fall into the both the hub and how that would connect out to the spokes model. We know that there's also a PIO position that is in the works. And ideally, that person, this centralized communications leader, would be able to help with the process of hiring a PIO, is what I understand.
Yeah, what is PIO?
That position's been vacant since September.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
When we're talking about tools in the midterm, can you tell us a little bit about what is that software? Is that what, what are the tools that are used in this kind of work?
Yeah.
Yeah, software is part of that. So for an example, right now, as far as graphic design capabilities go, people in different departments are using individual licenses for graphic design software. So one example would need to centralize that so that the city has, you know, a plan with Adobe Creative, for example. And those licenses would then be basically assigned through that centralized hub to people in departments. So then you're able to make that more cost efficient and also so that it is coordinated and effective.
Yeah, sort of operationally and cost efficiency.
I'm going to shift for just a second to Krishna. Is this something that we have budget for or is this something we could make happen?
We can definitely make it happen, but we don't have any budget allocated.
Okay, that was my question.
And also it is the, yeah, it's also the resource issue too. So we need somebody to be able to go through the inventory of all the graphic design tools the individual staff are using and then kind of come up with a centralized solution and purchase licenses. It's a project.
Hence why that's six to 12 months in an optimistic way. Yes.
Okay. And you'll see in their resources, the beginning planning for dedicated funding, that's a piece of that as well. Because right now, a lot of departments are funding their own resources as far as communications go and funding partial role for communications and being able to have a centralized source of funding for communications is going to make it much easier to formulate things like having a centralized.
Okay, I will ask another question. On the long-term side, we talked about the different channels and improving the website. I, you know, the new website is beautiful. It's great. It's a heck of a lot better than what we used to have. Have we been hearing from people or did you hear from people kind of? As a counselor, I'm always looking for themes because that means that I can kind of get to one thing that will positively affect lots of issues individually. Did we hear kind of themes throughout the frustrations with the website? That could be something that we could fix, you know, proactively, even though it's maybe not 12 or 18 months. But did we hear that and is that kind of information that you could pass along to staff?
Yeah, absolutely. We heard, I mean, search and navigation. And I mean, it's, the interesting thing is, is we heard that, well, first of all, let's talk about that first. We heard that from a number of different places. It was, didn't know quite how to find something. Even though they were assured it was there, they still had trouble finding it. And sometime that was, sometimes that was the navigation and the system that you use. It sort of uses multiple different ways to get you to a place on the website if you need to. And that confused people sometimes. And then the search function itself was just wasn't kind of up to snuff, I suppose, is what we heard from a couple of people. We also learned after we heard all those, I mean, we know that you did a lot of work upgrading that website not terribly long ago. And a couple of things you did at work where essentially it templatizes a lot of those page designs. And so we're not necessarily at this point saying, you know, throw it out in the woods if you knew. But it would be something to like, you know, use your leverage and maybe other cities' leverage, but pressure on that vendor to create some better user experience. As long as we're in, as long as they have this contract and we use the pages that they provide, let's get them to provide better options that you can bring to your website. And that's something you can possibly do in tandem with other cities, sort of going together and lobbying for that.
Yeah, and I can speak on that. So we actually had a dedicated resource, one empty, to manage the website more, right? Through the organizational restructuring in 2008, we actually lost the position. So right now, we are working, I know I'm looking at Courtney here, but staff are working with the vendor. The vendor management with all these applications and the technology tools, and again, goes back to a dedicated resource to work with them to continue to make those improvements, right? So we are definitely missing some resources here to be able to do that. Even though they should be providing the services they should be providing, we are not the only city that is struggling with it. Pretty much every other city that are part of this process with this particular vendor are also struggling, right? So yes, there is a lot of improvements that we need to make. And, and I'll keep, Staley and I were talking about, that is the one source that everybody has information. That is one, the most important resource that the community has to get the information. And we are not able to provide what they're looking for. So.
Well, on one side, I'm really glad that it's not just me. Because I was like, I'm really bad at searching. Like I must choose the wrong words or whatnot. So that's really, this is personally great to hear. And again, it just goes back to all of those cuts throughout, you know, throughout time and space of the last 20-plus years that we've been making that maybe is not something that you come face-to-face with as a person or something that is tangible. But when you realize that that website that you're trying to interact with could be so much better if we would have that behind-the-scenes staff member just another part of the story, huh?
Every organization has at least two to three technical resources to manage websites.
And then we have zero.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So that again poses the question that I was going to ask. We're already starting to talk about we need a PIO and then some additional staff to help manage the website. Can you give us, maybe Krishna or you, an idea of how many staff we're talking about to really just kind of get the beginnings going? And so that we can start to have an understanding of the cost of those additional staff? And, and then where that might then lead? I guess I'm just kind of trying to ask the question of, what are we looking at in ends costs?
To be completely frank, cost isn't something that we looked at in this plan, I'm sorry to say. And I also will say that when we were trying to look at killing this thinking, we were thinking about these from roles, jobs that need to be done. So we weren't necessarily thinking of it in our minds as you need to hire two people to do this. Because it felt like that there were already like portions of these jobs being handled in different places throughout. So it might, it might more quickly be, how can we reconfigure the way that certain people do certain work in order to get more emphasis on this going forward? So that's how it appeared to us in the absence of actually going through like a a real assessment of a headcount, for example.
And we do have an attachment because as part of this work, we looked at 11 other peer communities. And so there's an attachment in appendix in your report. And we are under-resourced as it relates to communications. We have two people right now citywide who are doing communications. And then we have some parts of other people that we can use and benefit from in terms of their experience and their knowledge and awareness. But then I think it's up to eight people in communications. So just if you're imagining resource and people power, we have far less than other cities. So there is an attachment. Very, very good and detailed analysis of our peer communities in the...
I don't think that's printed out.
Yeah, it's not in here. And do we have access to that whole report? Earlier today?
The entire 110 pages. So I will say about that city, it is, the city, the peer review that we did, we had, we talked to 10 other cities in the Western US. And they were all, it turned out that they were all really eager to figure this out too. And so we got them all to agree to be extraordinarily open with their answers if we would share the results, sort of stripped out of any specific, anything specific to Salem. So I mean, just kind of the high-level results, so that they could see how they compared to other cities as well, as well. So it's a very detailed report. And Courtney's right, I would say that Salem is one of the, one of the most under-resourced if you compare it to these other cities. And the list is in that report, the specific cities. There's no, there's no two identical ways these cities go about solving this issue in their communities. But there is a lot that we took from that that we're actually bringing to our recommendations here. There's, Katie, please.
So this is why I think starting with the chief communications officer and repurposing the PIO position that's in the executive office, through that position is probably the best place to start. Then we can have somebody specifically tasked with looking at the other resources that are in the system and creating that hub and spoke and helping us decide which resources need to be in the spoke and which resources need to be in the hub. Because that hasn't been decided. I suspect that in order to do this well, we're going to need some more resource in the system. And that may need simply, in addition to the chief communications officer having that PIO function in the executive office and then bringing some resources from spokes into the executive office. That may be graphic communication resources or something to that effect. When I was at the city of Olympia, we went through a very similar process, hired a consultant, had them come in, evaluate our communication resources. And at that time, we had a fairly decentralized system also. They recommended creating a PIO, a chief information officer position. So we did that and a deputy and a couple of graphic information, or graphic design people as part of that hub. So, you know, I suspect that that is where we'll go with this. But again, I think the place that we need to start really is with bringing that person in and then continuing those conversations at a staff level for, you know, what makes sense? What are we going to lose by doing that and what are we going to gain by doing that? So we haven't had those conversations yet. But I am a proponent of a more robust communications function in the city manager's office. I think we miss out on a lot of opportunities for more strategically-driven communications as opposed to what's happening at the periphery of the organization, which is really just more functional. Like dealing with the situation that's immediately in front of them without necessarily thinking about the larger objectives of the, of the organization.
Absolutely agree. I'd like to make one sort of comment very quickly before we kind of move into this next piece. About something that we've talked about quite a lot, but isn't necessarily spelled out very well in the final plan you'll read. The idea behind centralized function and being able to collaborate and how we get that, use that to tell the stories of the city or get important information out. You know, that's in the, in the service of both operational and cost efficiency and also just that everybody is, you know, singing from the same proverbial songbook, as we like to say. But there is a complication in a city that doesn't make it just very cut and dry. And that is that there are parts of the city that have to be able to act pretty quickly on their own. And we're talking about buyer, lease, and often public works. And so that is something Madeline mentioned earlier. There's a, one of our recommendations is that there's essentially a playbook. This is how communications works at, or in the city of Salem. And we really think that that's where we're going to address how to give those three important functions, you know, the autonomy and the capacity to communicate immediately when they need to, but still communicate with the rest of that internal group so that the rest of the, of the city understands what their, what message they're getting across, how they're doing that, how they can support that from different parts of the city. We still think there's an important communication function in that. But we also think that it's really important to call out that, that is something that needs to be addressed because it's critical to public safety.
Thank you.
Just wanted to call that out before we...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Did you get a chance to look at the visual version of the report? The first appendix in there is a sort of suggested roles diagram as far as, from, from what we learned from the other cities that we talked to, the, basically it's just suggested, these are roles that could offer a central link and then these are roles that we recommend center in a more decentralized way. So that, that's an, there's an example from there that you can look at.
Any last questions here before I, just one last section I want to talk a little bit about?
I just wanted to come back to the website and I can't overstate the importance of the website. I think when people interact with the city today, the website may be their primary means of understanding the city. It's probably more important than our physical location. That digital footprint that we have is extraordinarily important. So I hope that we can continue to look at the resources necessary to make that literally our, our front door of our community. You know, as we talk about efficiencies, I think one of the efficiencies that we can achieve is with a more robust webpage that allows people to self-serve more for public records requests. For example, we spend a lot of time on public records requests as much as we can drive that out to the individuals inquiring, the better off we're going to be. And then today Krishna and I and Courtney were talking with a professor from the University of Oregon about AI, artificial intelligence, and the role of AI in local government. And over the course of the next six to nine months, we're going to be having that conversation with a group of very bright, young students, as well as a professor who's going to be leading those conversations. And I think there's tremendous investment potential there, tremendous return there. So stay, stay tuned on that.
Thank you. The very last thing we want to kind of walk through. I want to do this relatively quickly, but at the beginning, we really specified the primary objectives that this whole plan was really meant to address. And then toward the end, we realized that any plan you put together like this, you need to have some way to measure how successful you are. If for no other reason, you can make some adjustment if you're not making it successful. And so often you'll come to a place in plans like this where people like us will stand in front of you and say, "You should do X, Y, and Z to measure this." But instead, what we've done is for each of those objectives, we've listed a handful of things that would be important impact measurements that we think you should consider. Not all of them, but some of them. And the reason we went about it in this particular way was because number one, we wanted to frame it... was because number one, we wanted to frame it from a term of the impact that this makes. Not like how many webpages have you built, but maybe how many people came and stayed for more than five minutes. Maybe that's a more important thing to measure. We also know that some of these things might be underway already. We're not necessarily recommending that you throw something out that you're doing that's working and bring something different. So we thought that the more appropriate thing to do would be to offer several suggestions of things you might consider as a way to measure. So out of the five different primary objectives for this plan, maybe you, maybe there's eight things that you measure that becoming like your dashboard of how are we doing in making uh doing a much better job in communicating, engaging with our community? And maybe that's the window that we look at, so it's relatively quick. Um, but we wanted to leave that decision uh to you and the people who do the work because they will have a much clearer idea of how to pull those together than than we possibly could at this point. I'll be able to walk through those if you want, but they're all in your uh your boardroom. You've already been talking for, I think, longer than you ever asked to talk in the first place.
I guess just perspective, I mean, you've got a list here of like eight or nine things um in the potential metrics. Um, do you have one or two that stand out as like better to track or more important than the rest?
One of the points that we make in the plan is around the what is currently what they call the big survey for the city of Salem.
Satisfaction, the community satisfaction.
The community satisfaction survey, um which happens every five years, right? Right now?
Every year.
Every year, sorry, every one year right now. Uh, and one of the things that we suggested is uh potentially doing poll surveys more frequently, uh maybe quarterly in order to get as much feedback as possible from people who are using the website, from people who are engaging in public engagement activity. Um, so that you can really hear things back quickly instead of having uh or in addition to depending on your priorities, but um so that you can get faster feedback on changes that are happening so that you can commit as needed more quickly. Uh, and those types of things are more around, you know, again, satisfaction, is the website working for you? How is it working? How is it not working? Um, how the how has public engagement been going for you? Did you get what you needed out of it? Did you feel supported um in being there? Things like.
Uh, I would actually agree, and that's sort of like the second to last one up here of the the assessment piece. The thing about these measurements is, you know, some of these are very qualitative, it's more quantitative. And I think you also may have to make some decisions about which of things do we want to like count as a number? Which things do we feel like we can assess just as uh as a culture, a cultural reflection on that.
Thank you for the question.
I'm sorry that that's kind of an answer, non-answer.
I think it was a good answer.
Okay, good, yeah.
No, I I liked a lot of these because I like um making lists and then doing things and checking them off. And I feel like some of these are very much so like that, you know, increasing impressions or um duration on the website uh means that they're not leaving frustrated like I often do. Um, right, so the or increasing in like neighborhood association meetings or people attending events. Um, I think that's really good. And uh positive, like our light parade this last Christmas.
Yeah. So I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go for it.
So first, it's probably a question for you, Krishna. Um, in this communication plan, what staff do we already have available? Because I'm looking at this activities and resources where it talks about people and they have like twenty. Um, on page twenty, there's like twenty positions that could be, I I guess what I'm looking for is what are you looking for in terms of additional staff to make something like this happen?
Uh, so for the website perspective?
Well, just this whole communication plan and be- because this goes all the way from communication director, Microsoft product owner, graphic designer, website manager, web designer, manager of im- implementing communication strategy, strategy, strategy. Um, just a whole bunch of um a video person, a video editor, a photographer, sound engineer, recorder, childcare coordinator, city concierge, city council concierge, just a whole bunch. So I I'm just looking for.
I can speak that really quickly first, so uh uh this is what I was trying to clarify earlier that maybe I did do a great job at. So this page isn't a list of uh positions, it's a list of roles. So several of those roles could be combined into.
But that's what I was asking is what staff do we already have? And what additional staff might be needed to implement the direction that we're headed?
Yeah, so so there are a couple of things. It kind of depends on the path that we're going to pick, right? Like so right now, the website, you know, we are, we have vendor that is providing a solution to us. But we do need a technical resource that can do the vendor management when it comes to the technical improvements and the upgrades and the updates and all that. So that is like a resource on the technical side. Uh, and then if we decide to implement our own website and and we're just like, you know, if the solution that we have is not needing the city's things. And I was talking to other cities about it too, and it's extremely difficult to get off-the-shelf product from a vendor and make it work for us, especially when it comes to the websites. There are not many cities that are happy with the solution that they have. So if we go with our own solution, that means we need what the list that you're seeing, a web designer, and we don't have a resource for that. We have people that do web designing, we have the skill set, but they're already working on other systems.
Right.
So so we need a web designer, we also need somebody who can maintain the system, so you're probably looking at two F T's. Right, so we are kind of always looking at the cost.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what what does it take to go with a an outside vendor to get the product for plus one F T and two F T? So just have to kind of look at that. Uh, from the other pieces, there is a lot of technology solutions and the tools that we are looking at, right? We definitely need, I'm not looking at one F T either, but there may be like uh some resources there to be able to go through, okay, what do we own? How are the city, different city staff are using the technology? And get an inventory of everything that we're doing. And from that, what is that ideal technology solution that we want to have in order to do that centralized communication, right, the centralized solution for our but I don't know what F D will have for that, so.
So from that communications resources in terms of the staff that are available, we have a um a vacant P I O in the city manager's office. We have a P I O in police and we have a P I O in fire. In fire, that person has several different responsibilities, not just solely P I O. We also have a communications and media relations specialist in the city manager's office. We have a public information manager in um our uh public works group and in our urban and community development. So it's um three people devoted to communications and support of the city and then whatever portion of me is available in the moment. So that's the the sum total of the response we have available to us. And then we have, yes, so that would be three people for whom their work is only communications. And I think Angie, you mostly communications, but you still do some crime prevention.
Oh, no, it's not crime prevention, I know, it's P I O, the tiny word.
Yeah, so so the only three people in the whole city organization that are doing communications as the sole function of their work, that's that's what we have. Um, and then we have the website right now is being managed by that three-person core group and whatever part of me is there in the moment. Um, and then we also have uh interpretation contracts that are run centrally, translation contracts that are run centrally. And um we have a graphics uh program. It's a really lightweight, I mean, you can't do any of the really cool things, but it is a a program that helps ma- make us better more quickly with little training. And then we have two folks in public works who are graphic design and layout specialists. And so that's the sum total of our resources available. And there's no communications budget.
So so what do we need to make this happen, is what I ask.
So so I
I I that I'm just, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Right, and and so I think that we're under-resourced. Bend is uh third half of our population and has eight people. Um, and we don't have to do it the same way they're doing it, but they do have a really robust program. Um, there are other options and certainly if we were to bring in someone who could function as a chief communications officer for the city, they would have other ideas and we might be able to channel the resources that are available differently. Um, but but I, in my opinion, we are a communications officer down, we are a P I O down, and then we probably are three other people that would have functions. But right now, um it's it's sort of, it's it's kind of designed like a matrix. So we have a person whose chief responsibility is this thing and they can back up on this thing. And then we have that all over the map. And then we have a third string backup and and all of that, so it's it's challenging. There's there's a lot going on. Yeah, oh, I did I say out loud that we have a whole bunch of project managers across the city who are doing outreach and engagement also on projects? That's true, so so Eunice Kim, for example, you see her out a lot on all of the planning work. Uh, Julie Wernicki out on the transportation planning work. We have um of some outreach group out of public works that's doing clean streams work. We have a lot, um we have volunteer coordinator, you could consider that, neighborhood association person, youth development person. So we have a lot of folks who are doing the work, um but it's not the sole function of their job. And then often we will supplement on some of the larger projects with consulting support. Um, but it's not uh effective as we've discussed.
So I I'm hearing you saying you need at least five.
I would guess, but I would want to be, I would want to be careful and consider the resources and the people on hand. But we're not in a position to make that kind of investment today.
Right, right.
What I'd like to do is come back to council with proposal, uh one that we can implement over time, uh that has some specific dollars associated with it so that we have a clear idea of what we're buying into. Obviously, uh the outcome of the employee payroll tax has some impact on this also. So you we certainly won't be rushing forward to fill any of these positions until we know with some certainty where that's going and how that's going to affect us going forward.
And I'm just asking questions now because sometimes I feel like by the time something comes to us at council, the cake is baked. As I've heard many times.
This is pretty rough still. This is pretty runny.
Right, right, so I'm I have made a commitment to the folks in my ward and to people that I've been talking to that I will ask more questions and I'm not gonna just sit back and not ask questions.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, great questions. Yeah, already.
I probably have.
Sorry, Linda? Okay.
I just have a follow-up, so uh I think it is important to understand that like we have a constrained city budget um and that we don't yet know what our, you know, fiscal future is, it's not set. We've kind of started to go in a direction, but we're not there yet. My question is trying to break this down, what can we do in the short term? I mean, I hear that we've got this opening and a P I O and I'm hearing that it's going to be repurposed or potentially repurposed into like the chief communicating officer. What can we do that doesn't require like a motion?
We can do that administrative go-through and reclassify an existing position um administratively. That gets us only, you know, a marginal return on investment from a capacity perspective. But it changes the level of person that we're pursuing uh then or that's filling that position. And their responsibility levels would change, their responsibility for implementing strategic and developing strategic direction would change. So we'd be looking for a different person than as previously outlined that position, we would pay them more. So there's that increment. Certainly that increment is not going to, you know, plus or minus our budget uh into default. Uh, you know, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars there, so that I'm relatively comfortable with. Beyond that, you not have the capacity or the approval to, and we would have to come back to city council specifically for that that approval.
And then just as a follow-up, as a comment, not as much a question, but I definitely think that our our comparison as it stands now with zero compared to Ben having eight, I think that zero is not enough. So I would be supportive of having more. I think that, you know, that, you know, the entire time I've been on council and before, communication, you know, rises to the top of many people's, you know, requests for improvement. Not just us on council, but the what we're hearing from our constituents, so I think that this is very important.
Communications is obviously a key component to what governments do. Uh, and as we have worked our way through the employee engagement survey, we've also discovered that our internal communication capacity also needs to be enhanced. Our employees are having many of the same questions as our customers are having and 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 your constituents are having about the city and our operations. So, you know, we we are we are talking to our friends from territory about helping us look at our internal communication systems as well as this more external focus.
Would this, um, what are we calling him, director, the position we're looking at? Sorry, I'm driving a bike. He's chief communication officer, um would they report to you?
It would be a department head level position.
So they would be on the executive team, okay, that would be, I would say, vital to communications.
Okay, thank you. I uh, it was, it's not really a question, I just wanted to make the statement, which is basically already having been said um in that I think communications is so critical uh because a lot of the public's frustrations come out as things are not transparent, things are not being communicated well, and I feel that um improving not only communications will improve branding and will improve vision others, an exterior, an exterior vision of us. And I think that that is sorely lacking and something that is really critical that we need to work on. It's just a statement.
Thank you. Anything else as far as questions? Do you have any more slides? Do you want to, okay, any other things for us that you would like to leave us with?
I think we've left you with plenty already.
Yes, thank you very much for your reports, thank you for your work. Um, and I look forward to seeing how this all comes together and I know Keith will think all of that and make something great come out, so thank you for your work.
It's been a pleasure and it's lovely to see so many of you that I have only got to talk to online. On the big block. It was a really lovely sort of oh, connected. Hopefully we'll meet again.
Yes, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We have a couple more updates, there's two more, well, one and a half square areas. So we are coming here. Um, so we have five other things as a quick update uh from engaging our community that we want to do again. There's a lot more in your packet of material. And the first item on here is the neighborhood and neighbor communications. That was a motion on the floor during, I think it was last budget season. And there were fifty thousand dollars devoted to neighborhood education. We did a neighborhood marketing campaign blitz. If you, uh I know you sometimes come by my house, Councilor Nishiyoka, and you've seen the yard signs that are out and about. Um, I Salem Health Authority has some too. Um, and the library I think put one out, anyway, it's great. Uh, we we're trying to raise all votes and have neighborhoods become more visible and so that we can see more people participate in their neighborhood associations. Um, we are doing now a second round of the photo shoots, so we're getting more neighbors who are interested in having those happen and we'll have a whole bunch more signs available. The other work that we did was we worked with individual neighborhood association boards, and some of you have seen us around. Um, and we've been talking about what it is they think is going to turn the dial on participation in their neighborhood. And we've been able to do some really cool things of their own idea um to really help bolster neighborhood association uh participation. My favorite example is Swan, they decided to try to bring people in around um hard, you know, it was a it was February fourteenth was when their meeting was gonna land, so they decided to do some um A E D, hands only, uh CPR and training for people and they told everybody way in advance, we bought pizza for that event and they had a great turnout that they turned into uh a planting event around Earth Day. So they have been able to keep that moving, and so that's really exciting. We're seeing different levels of success in different neighborhoods, but it's it's really fun to get in and try to push their ideas for how to make um participation greater. So we're doing that still, any questions on that?
How has the fifty thousand dollars been holding up? Is it?
We're in our second round of marketing, so we're getting We're in our second round of marketing, so we're getting again new signs, you'll see. Uh, I don't know, I didn't mention, but you probably saw quite a lot in uh newspapers and on billboards. We're going to do another buy like that and we should be mostly rounded out. So it it feels really good, it's um, we're seeing what I thought we were would see, we're seeing people see themselves and the neighbors in these images. And it's really drawing a lot more excitement and and participation, so it's really fun. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been fun to have funds. The next thing on this list is um equity and delivery of our programs and services. That works uh just launched in the end of noon and we're hoping to complete that work in January of twenty four. What we expect to come out of it are uh some identification of gaps and recommendations. Similar to what you just heard from uh Greg and Madeline, that's the same kind of approach to what we want to do, we want to get a lot of input. Um, and then we're going to be developing an equity assessment framework. And that'll help us think about D E I maturity, it'll help us think about areas for improvement around policies, programs, practices, procedures. How we want to measure success. Um, and uh we hope to help use that as a planning tool for the work. So that's exciting to get that out of it. Will that come to council at some point in time? Of course, and you may actually get a call too, uh, we're working with Moss Adams on that uh equity assessment. And so you're likely to hear when we get really going. Um, we've had just a short kickoff and then I think on Wednesday, there's a really big workshop that staff are going to be participating in. And then we're going to go out and do a lot of the information gathering and so you'll hear, I'm sure. That's great, I've been really encouraged by the equity lenses that we've been able to develop as far as the neighborhood traffic management plan and within the bond um framework of working with Brian and your group has been really, really. Um, really great um and and encouraging, and so I'm I'm looking forward to this work. And they are going to get all of that great work as a starting point for their assessment too and the things that have come before. Um, on the review of city charter, that work is scheduled to begin in January because it's really important, but we can't do everything all at once. And so that work is going to start in January, that again is Moss Adams supported. And that's really looking at the current governance framework and trying to see if it still aligns with today's world. Um, it has been quite a while since we've kicked the tires of some of those pieces, and so it's a really um great opportunity to do so. What I mean is looking at the city charter, the council committee structure and boards and commissions. And so all of that sort of, how do you get your advice, where does it come from, is that the right structure, should we change anything up, do you need a different group? Do you need one less, you know, kind of thinking through all of those variables? And that will be heavy on um engagement from you. When we do a review or any kind of update to the charter, does that need to go to the voters? Here is city attorney Dan Ashes.
Any change to the charter would be commuted by the voters.
Okay, are we hoping to then go in May or November of next year? For something like this, or is this like a year long process that then we would be looking at or twenty twenty five? I think we'll have to get into it and see what we find. Okay, because depending on your uh level of appetite too, it could be extensive, it could be, we we'll have to see what we're working with. Great, that sounds good, thank you. I don't, I don't have any idea what what the answers are going to be at this point, so I look forward to finding out. Yes, thank you. Uh, the next one here is the community engaged policing and if you have any questions, I tell you right now, I'm going to get your chief. What I know about it is encapsulated in the report that you got for this evening. Um, but what what we're really looking to do is it's the safe Salem funding that really drives the work here in community policing. Um, it's really focusing on partnerships, uh, community partnerships and problem solving. And that takes more resources, as you know, than we have today. Um, and so that's the focus of this initiative is really bringing the community back into policing. In a different way, a lot more outreach and engagement. Do you have any questions? Because I did horribly on that and there's a lot more. It's really cool, it's a whole theory of work, it's fabulous. I guess I have a question that's more of a general one, maybe for you, Keith, but depending on what happens with Safe Salem. If if we're back to kind of square one. Do we need to then have a bigger conversation about what our strategic goals are? Because as we move through this, these are all great and and I am very excited about the work in the direction that this is going. But this is all also really hinging on new revenue source. If we don't have that, then really a lot of this just needs to get thrown out. If we don't find another source of funding and time is kind of of the essence, so maybe you could help me understand that a little bit?
Uh, we definitely would not be moving forward with any plans to uh implement our community policing program as we envisioned it in Safe Salem. And if it, uh, if it's not funded for some reason. Uh, as far as the chief strategic plan. There's a pace associated with that and obviously without additional funding, you know, we're not going to be able to advance that program. In fact, we probably would need to fall back and reassess. How we are going to do policing in a smaller and less robust. With a smaller and less robust organization, what does that look like? Uh, that is a strategic planning challenge and one that I would put back to the chief. Uh, and his team and in community to respond to, what what does that look like?
Yeah, and I found, you know, community policing, you never want to think of it as a program or a project because it's more of a philosophy. Like every police officer should understand the concepts and, you know, community policing partnership and collaboration, relationship building. Uh, but I've also found that uh when you're working in a busy city, it's hard to have the time to do that. To build a relationship with anybody takes time. I just had a wonderful meeting this morning with Council Nishiyoka and five or six business owners here. The Gokrister area, I know a lot of concerns and issues that we've been talking about for over a year. Um, and it's very, very challenging to establish a relationship and actually follow through on some of the things that they need us to do in that area, giving our staffing. That's community policing, you just don't have the time or the bodies to to build that out if you should. Um, I've done the same with Council Hoy, some problems are going on downtown businesses. So, you know, we need that sort of investment of time, building relationships with our business owners and folks that are actually experiencing livability issues and crime issues. There may not be some other violent crime issues that we're obviously dedicating resources to. So to me, that's what community policing looks like without additional, this, I've been telling the story for a long time. You got a community policing engagement survey that we put together, assessment that tells us we need sixty officers, we can do an internal assessment about our staffing. And so we've built a case for this already, um, so I've been talking about this for a long time, but to not take a step forward or to take a step back. We're just going to completely shut that vision down. Keep us right where we are in the best of, in the best scenario and keep us where we are now. Um, so that's what I worry about, so again, always try to emphasize a community policing philosophy with all of my staff. But sit down with somebody for an hour and have a conversation, do problem solving, it takes time. Yeah, our officers have to have the time to do that as well, that's what this is all about.
Thank you, yeah, I see so many other little things, right, like, I don't know where we have the budget for equity work, I don't know where we have the budget for. A climate action work, I definitely see um our unhoused neighbors and all of the S O S team and all of the other things that we're doing in that capacity. As things that are, you know, at risk of of being lost and and when you start looking at, what do we have, four strategic goals or five?
Four.
You know, I mean, we're really starting to to chop those down and so um we. I, uh. I guess that's just something that is on the peripheral of my brain as we are in unsettled waters at the current moment. So, um, I guess I wanted to share that here with the people who are going to be in charge of. Um, either cutting this thing or helping it um see it through, so. We have one more thing and I know that it's about emergency response and I got the pleasure of meeting our new hire at our last meeting, their last meeting. Yes, and I think there's going to be a presentation from him or an opportunity to meet him again later.
Yes, this fall.
Fall, that's great, and remind me his name, I don't like to just call him. Joe, just call me Joe, okay. I do want him to address a little bit why I split um the this item because it is important that you know there are two really core foundational. Emergency plans that are in process right now, um, and that is the uh natural hazard mitigation plan and the emergency management plan. And I got involved accidentally in the natural hazard mitigation plan. And what I want you to know about that is that it's really cool to me, the way we're thinking through all of the hazards that are um potentially occurring in our community. And there's a an equity lens and treatment to all of that work as well as the emergency management plan. And it's really interesting to, I just sat in for on accident. And um it's really interesting work and it's it's very well, in my opinion, very well shepherded. So I'm excited to see where that comes, uh, how that comes. And then if you've been in neighborhood association meetings, you may have met Ruthie, she's out doing, uh, yes, everybody's nodding, she's out doing um defensible space planning. Um, and that's great, she's out doing presentations on that and that's through again, I think through the end of twenty three. I know she's out right now and trying to engage in more partnerships and conversations, so um that work is going on. Anything you would like to add, Jean? Good, any questions on that?
I guess, this this is kind of rhetorical, it's it's a follow up, I'm I'm inspired. So, so, uh, you know, city manager chiefs, can we cut our way to any of these, uh, you know, policy goals? Their way to like have less than zero people for communication? Like, can we cut our way to, uh, you know, the safe Salem community gauge and policing model that we're trying to to go towards with twelve two officers? I think the answer is pretty self explanatory, but just for the record, can we cut our way to those things? Yeah.
We we will not um staff station twelve.
At our house, at our house, we call him Mr. Nobody, you know, like, who did this?
No.
Nobody, right, so Mr. Nobody, so Mr. Nobody stepped. Um, so we have one one last section that you all have been forecasting. Um, and this section is called uh sustaining infrastructure and services. This is another one of the priority areas that you established for us, I think even in the strategic plan. And it's carried through into this year, um, again, because we had it last year as well. Um, primarily this dated with the community improvement bond, the delivery of all of those projects. I noticed about last week sometime that we were um probably may have missed a quarterly report in there somewhere to council. So we do need to um write that any minute and um you'll get another report about some of the great work that that committee is doing and the staff are doing to support their work. And we also are constantly exploring opportunities to lower expenses, there's a longer narrative in your report about some of them. And you've heard a little bit about them today and then um opportunities to increase revenue. The first of two steps was in the fiscal year twenty four budget, the operations need increase and the second um advanced uh uh last Monday night. So those are the updates for that particular area, are there any questions about any of those? Okay, um, and so my last slide is just a quick reminder about how this happens every year. And I don't think you can get it on the line, but you can see, um, we are at an update and we're heading into the fall and winter. I know it's possible to imagine that it's true, we are uh staging now the annual community satisfaction survey, which was mentioned shortly a a little bit ago. Um, we're getting ready and gearing up for the forecasting um that happens, usually it starts in about November, they firm up all of their guest estimates, which are really good. And then in January, there's a budget planning presentation of the forecast. Um, and then we, sorry, I forgot, in in October, I try to get you a a hot um pretty report on all of these updates. And it represents more progress than we've achieved even today. Um, we start talking in November usually at a work session with you about what the next year's priorities are going to be or what you'd like to see. Sometimes that's a really good opportunity to raise new ideas and it lets us as staff get some time to figure out how we might be able to do that. We report out to you in January, sometimes February work session, and then that guides the development of the budget and we come back here mid year to talk about how we've been. So that's our annual cycle for your goals and the strategic plan. Any other questions or comments about where we are, where we're going?
Just a quick one, so the community satisfaction survey has been referenced, where are we at in this process? I know what happens every year, I think the survey questions go out to the community um in September or August.
Yes, we try to stage the survey for September.
Okay.
Yes, and we aren't, um, we are at our capacity there too. In terms of the uh volume of questions and areas of interest that we want to survey. And so we're looking and we also need to kind of keep the baseline, uh, so we have a comparative value. So we do have, I think there might be four or five questions that we set out every other year because they're less sensitive. Uh, and so we've been trying to do that as well as we go, so yeah, September is when it comes out.
It's pretty set, like what we're going to ask for this year.
It's pretty set.
Okay.
Um, we, if we're going to add anything, we're going to have to take out another data point. And um as I mentioned, we've already looked at it critically and pulled some question feeling chest every other year, so it's pretty set. If you guys have ideas that you want to inquire, we just need to look at the places that we could cut out of the survey. We're we, the sensitivity is if you ask too many questions at too very detailed, you lose people.
Yeah.
And we really want to try to get good enough.
We, if if council have an interest in surveying the community for other purposes, we certainly can can entertain that with a separate.
Yes, and we do all kinds of community engagement, surveys with community engagement purpose. We do all kinds of surveys all the time on those kinds of topics. This is a little different because it's a statistically valid sampling and it just, it that's where the issue comes.
I guess I do have a follow up question. Uh, so this is like, like you said, it's statistically significant, it's powered like to four hundred questionnaires or whatever.
Yep.
Um, are any of those other surveys you're talking about, are they scientific or are they, they're more just kind of you collect data and it is what it is, but it's not necessarily scientific?
Correct, it does have value.
Right.
And, you know, one might argue in an American Express commercial that it has, it has value that we can't even gauge. Because it is a a wonderful way to show uh community members who take the time that we're listening. Um, and often it informs a plan, a program or a policy. Is there a chance for counselors to see those questions before it goes out? I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to have input when we don't know what it is. Sure, it's um, it's on the website.
Or is it in a separate part of the website?
It's on the website.
Okay.
Under government shaping Salem's future and there's a whole strategic plan section, you can see all the past community reports. You can see all the past uh community satisfaction surveys. I would go to the last year, the because the last year has all the in the, if you go straight to the end, you can see all of the years. Uh, and so you can have that comparative. Um, I like to go just straight to the end because you can also see what the questions are and how they're delivered. Can you say that one more time, where you find it? Uh, yep, government shaping Salem's future.
Send you.
Send a link, I can do that too. And uh, and that's where the strategic qualities. So to your knowledge, none of the questions have changed from last year? We may have, I don't, I haven't seen the final draft, we're not intending to, except for that every other year swap. There are about three, four, or five questions that we found weren't as sensitive. And so we tend to swap those out so that we can have more information. Okay, makes sense. Yep, sounds good. Do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing else.
Does anybody, Vanessa, I'm checking in with you, or Council Nordike, I'm checking in with you to see if you have anything?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else, uh, Keith?
I would like to thank Courtney for her work on the uh, as usual, thorough, complete, uh, well. Well structured, uh, and Courtney is not our communications director, but she has been functioning as such uh since September. And also running our strategic planning effort and our legislative effort um as well. So, you know, like many people, she wears many hats. Working in communications in the city manager's office is a big help, thank you.
It was a gift, it was a gift after our communications experience around the water and that's what we. Okay, and I just want to say that in the work that I do, I understand how important it is to be relevant in the. In the web um world.
I understand how important it is to be relevant in the, in the web, um, world and on the internet. And so I'm, I'm not in any way trying to say that this stuff isn't important. I, I think it's critical. Um, I was just trying to figure out how we're supposed to get there. We are connected with other cities and we are plotting, using. So we're.
I would.
And we, we also like pre-COVID, we had a bigger collaborative conversations all the time with other cities. We just haven't brought that back. And we also have a regional P I O group that meets around, um, emergency communications. And that also has been failing a bit. So we, we hope to bring back a lot of those conversations so that we can all be better.
Well, I was hoping to have us out before eight and we have accomplished that. So we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Look at how well you handled that gap.
I know. I, it's still.